Public Plan Commission Meeting for August 14th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers.
Here.
Mrs. Sneak.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Wolke. Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mayor Beamish.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have our minutes that have been disseminated to us on July 24th. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes?
Will they be approved as submitted?
Or... Motion of support. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they stand accepted. First matter on the agenda is Historic District application for 322 West Main Street. The staff have reported.
Yes, sir, we do. The applicant, which is Lee's Realty Company, property owner is Jonathan Coomer, requesting a historic review from the Planning Commission to install some signage on the building located at 322 West Main Street. Mr. Coomer actually is here in the audience. I don't know if Mr. Lee's joining us as well. Like I said, the property is at 322 West Main Street, is located at the southeast intersection of Oxford Street and West Main, one block west of the courthouse. This property is on B2 General Business District. OHI form lists the building as a two-story nondescript brick structure located at the margin between commercial and residential districts. Structure established in 1847, it's not on the National Register. Building is described as very plain house that is connected with another house by modern addition serving as the entrance. The proposal, as in your packet, is the applicant is requesting to install wall signage matching the placement of previously installed wall signage on the West Main Street face of the building. The proposed sign is a 3.6 square foot sign. Along the Oxford Street face, the proposed sign is 22 square feet. And at the entry door for the business around the rear of the property that also faces Oxford Street is proposed signage on the window of 3.5 square feet. Building is permitted to have 150 square feet maximum, and proposed and existing signage will remain under that allowance. Proposed colors of these signs are Sherwin-Williams Safety Red, SW6994 Black of Night, and White. The application has been reviewed for compliance with all the other requirements of the zoning code except for the additional sign standards imposed by the Historic District. Our recommendation, staff does not recommend approval of the proposed signs based on the proposed sign colors do not complement the historic integrity of the building. Proposed sign colors is not in keeping with the visual relationship of the surrounding streetscape, and the proposed colors are not in keeping with the surrounding character of the Historic District. Also on your, along with your packets, the applicant has submitted some alternate designs if Commission would so entertain those if this application is not approved as submitted.
Okay, any questions of staff? Mr. Titterington? Get your mouth open and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Titter.
You too. You'll have your chance.
So we have these alternates.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that in the packet, there is, this is not the only sign that they're looking at, they're looking at smaller signs including the, at the entrance.
Yes, sir.
So let's take, for instance, the back page of the alternates. Would the recommendation be that we would go with the bottom of the page, whatever, I guess, page 10 of the packet? Not, not... Yeah, that one. So it would be the bottom options?
Are you talking about the bottom option being...
In the packet.
This one?
If you're looking at this page, is this the option that they're applying for, for the front of the building? I guess that's the front. Next, in front.
Those look like two alternates.
Right. Correct. So the, the current application is for the safety, the Sherwin-Williams Safety Red background, which...
Would be the top.
Which would be the top option that you have on that page right there. If Commission would rather entertain the alternate designs, that lower one would also match one of the alternate designs. That was just there as an example, to show that the signage would actually match each other. So there's a wall, there's a sign facing Oxford Street that's Safety Red, there is a sign, a 3.6 square foot sign on the front entry door facing West Main, which is the one you were just bringing up, Mr. Cappers.
Isn't that the color red, though, that we're having trouble with down here, what used to be United Dairy Farmers?
That was brought up years ago. Mr. Mayor Beamish mentioned even this most recent application was Grandpa Joe's and the red and white on the windows there, having concerns over the amount of red and how bright that is as well. So we have had concerns over how much red is being used.
Mr. McGary, I think you had a question.
Similar question. I'm just kind of, I was confused and now I get more confused when I got here and saw the more options.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? So what's on the table now before us is the application that is the bright red background.
Correct.
And that's what they want us to, to deal with today, because they haven't presented us a new application. They have withdrawn this application.
Correct.
Correct? So if we deny this application, they're, they're well within their right to make a re-application.
If they would like, we as staff would suggest amending the application to one of the more, if the Commission doesn't like this red, we can amend this current application for one of the alternate designs, because the tenant is already at this location and trying to operate his business.
But you can't amend the application if we deny the application today. So what they should do is amend the application before they bring it to us. Am I right?
My, my understanding is they want the red.
They want the red, but they under, in previous discussions with the owner and the applicant, we have told them that the red may not be suited or approved by the Commission, and if they have other alternate designs that they would rather have the Commission possibly act on today so they can install signage, we can present this.
Or they compare to amend their application at this time, before we act on it?
It's my understanding, yes, but if, Mr. Coomer, if you want to speak to that, I'd...
So Dustin Lees.
If you're going to speak, would you come to the microphone, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Say your name and address, please.
Jonathan Coomer. I address the 6455 Country Club Drive, Greenville, Ohio. I'm the building owner at 322 West Main Street, and in respect to the application, it's the intention of my leasee to be able to have his sign with his logo in the red. That is the point of today, to make a case that this sign is not necessarily out of the streetscape of the adjoining neighborhood, and that red is not a color that would be, should be objectional to someone who's trying to create a business with a sign that's very noticeable. The Donatos, which is two buildings away, less than 100 feet, has a bright red sign.
Donatos is not in Historic District.
Fair enough, but it's certainly in the neighborhood. The, the applicant is asking for the red sign to keep, like I said, with his logo that he's paid for, for many years, to keep his brand, et cetera. I'm not objectional whatsoever to the sign, because I think that it will bring even better attention to my sign that's there, as well as another tenant that sign is yet to be, be placed. So today's purpose was to see if we could have the red make an argument, make a case for it. My flowers out front are beautiful red, that's now. I'm sure Mr. Mayor walks by it on a daily basis as he goes about. So that's, that's the case, that's the purpose for me to be here. I talked to Mr. Lees, he's on his way, but was stuck in issues.
Well, just as, on a personal note, Mr. Coomer, I like the signage that you have, John Coomer signage, and the Hospice of Miami Valley signage. I like, I like those signs. The red really stands out, and I personally don't believe that that's proper in the Historic District. So what, what you're coming forth now is that you want the application to stand as the red background. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. This is Mr. Dustin Lees. Dustin, I'll update you. The question at hand is on your application, as we originally applied for with the red as the background. Is that what we're applying for?
Yes.
And the second sign that's listed on there was for a, I guess, Plan B.
Correct. The black background?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Plan B.
Okay. Which one do you want us to rule upon, Plan A or Plan B?
Well...
Because if we rule on Plan A, you can make another application later on, but it won't be heard today.
Okay, I misunderstood that, then. I thought if we did get Plan A, then you could play, approve Plan B today, that can move forward.
If we, you need to make an application. You have made an application with the red background.
Yes.
So that's the application that's to be forced today. What I'm saying is if you want to amend that application before we rule on it, you can, and that would be, I guess, what you're calling Plan B.
Okay, that's how I, I will go for the red background. If I'm here today is for the red background.
For the red background?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions, the applicant? Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff on this matter?
I just want to be clear, Robert, on the, there's an A and a B in our original packet, and then you've given the new options. And on the back page, that option is the same as what I'm looking at. There's the red, and then there was the black background with the red letter. Is that both, is that match the option, the last option?
That matches their, their last option for their alternative designs.
Which they're calling Option B.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I understand it.
Yes.
Because in terms of framing out, and again, I agree with what Mr. Cappers said, and John, I think your, your sign is beautiful, it seems to have that historic look to, and Hospice has the same kind of, and if that were in the, the black background with Lees in red, just as you, as I'm looking at, right here...
Yes, sir.
Which I'm hearing is Option B, I, I think that would be a compliment, and it would also be sort of a compromise, but it would also fit the look of that particular building, which Mr. Coomer's done a wonderful job in, I think, in the look of that building. So I guess, I'm like, Mr. Cappers, I'm wondering, it sounds to me like we're, first of all, voting on Option A, which was the original, and not Option B.
Now, we have someone that has approached the podium.
Yes.
Did you want to say something else, sir?
Well, I guess I wanted to speak to Option A if I could. I apologize for being late, but I don't know if I have an opportunity to speak towards that or not, before you begin.
No, go right ahead.
Can I approach? I have something here for you all, if that's okay, too.
Sure.
And I wanted to speak towards the, the Option A in Historic District, being, I understand, I think, Robert mentioned that Amy did red, didn't like red in Historic District.
And so I did, just driving around, and my first is a map, everything in the yellow pens are in Historic District, red pens were the offices, and the green pens are leading up to Historic District. And there's presence in Historic District have a red sign with white lettering. And those are some signs here I have, or pictures I have, they're Bridgestone, the Cabinet Factory, Dish. So there's a presence in Historic District for a red sign, white lettering. Another thing I mentioned that Robert brought to my attention was keeping things, or, what's this?
Symmetrical.
Symmetrical, and the same signs. Well, the bottom right, or the last two pictures on Historic District page, those buildings have very different signage, and they're both in Historic District. So there's also presence in Historic District not to have the exact same signs on the whole building. Now, the other page, next page is red signs leading up to our sign, the most of them was Donatos, which is a half block from me, albeit it's not in Historic District. But I just want to, I guess, speak to the fact that this is, I don't think I'm asking for anything outside the realm of what you already have in Historic District, it's already here. Obviously, we spent a lot of money in branding our company, and our red signs are our, are our brand. So that's where I like to have the red, that's why I'm asking for the red background. It does draw attention to the building for Mr. Coomer, draws business, attention to his business as well. So I think that it's a positive thing, I know John's all for it, he's here today. So I just want to give you my interpretation of, I think, I think it does fit in Historic District, I think it's, you already have things here, so I think it's out of the ordinary for us, so that's all.
Anything else?
If you have, no, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments to staff or otherwise?
And I just want to make sure that the applicant understands that the planning staff's recommendation was not in favor of this sign.
Right. And that's why I gave you that.
Okay. Okay. We have before us a request to approve the application for signage. Does the Commission want to take any action?
Mr. Chair, what happens if we do not take any action?
If we don't take any action, I would imagine it's presumed to be denied.
It is.
Is there any action to be taken on this matter?
Well, I'll, I'll just say, Mr. Chair, that, that my feeling is that because this is in the Historic District, because the two other signs have similar colors that are muted colors like this building, I, I have to agree with planning staff that I cannot see that the sign that's proposed to us with the red background is a sign that would fit the character at this place in the Historic District. But by going with this application, I'm saying that, not considering this, because we haven't been asked to consider.
That's correct.
That. I am only commenting on the sign that is completely red with white lettering.
May I discern from your comment that you would make a motion to deny the application?
For this particular sign, I would.
Is there support for that motion?
Call support.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll. An affirmative response is a denial of the, of the application.
Mrs. Sneak, yes. Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
The motion is approved, the application is denied.
I would urge you to contact staff, maybe come up with a compromise signage. Next matter on the agenda, then, is the, yeah. Is the Historic District application for 109 East Canal Street, the staff have reported.
Yes, we do. The property owner is Amy Evans, and she is requesting Planning Commission to review an exterior change by replacing the current asphalt shingle roof with a black metal master rib roof. Up on the, in front of Mr. Cappers, there's the actual brochure, it's not those paint colors, that's the next one. The OHI form lists this property as a traditional vernacular cottage horn. Character defining features of the building include two-by-two window sash, stamped foundation, and double doors on the sides. Staff recommends approval of this application. The roof is in need of updating, the color of the proposed roof is a neutral color and will not be intrusive within the Historic District.
Any questions of staff? I, I just want to mention the fact, when I see that on this item and the next item, staff's indication that the building is in need of repair and updating, that really doesn't make any difference to us, does it? I mean, certainly that is an item that we can consider, but the fact that it needs updating, or the roof needs repair, I, I don't know that that's a requirement that we consider. Why should we consider this request if, for instance, oh, never mind. Any other questions of staff? I'm, I'm struggling here.
Fellow exhibit gratuitous part of the, of the recommendation.
Yeah.
Not one of the criteria that we should base our decision on, on which we should base our decision.
I'll have a better understanding of what Planning Commission would like once we get the yard group, or yard and company recommendations back.
Well, if this roof didn't need updating, and they wanted to put a, a new roof on, what would have been the criteria that you would have looked at?
If they were replacing it with just a black asphalt shingle roof, they wouldn't even be here.
Okay.
No, I, I'll ask maybe a different question, maybe just the same question, different way. So they've got a perfectly good black asphalt shingle roof.
I don't know that it's perfectly good.
If they did, if they did, has nothing to do with them needing it to be updated, it's not a property maintenance issue, they just want to upgrade the building with a metal roof.
If they...
In that case, if they came to you and said, "We just want to improve the value of our property, we think it's going to look nicer," what, your, your recommendation would be that the color is a neutral color and will not be intrusive within the Historic District? Would that be the only criteria you would give us for recommending approval?
At this point, yes, because I don't know of anything else to say.
Okay. So again, I think the first bullet was just gratuitous in saying, hey, it needs to be up, it needs to be updated, they're recognizing it, they came to us, they want to comply with our procedures.
That makes sense. Any other questions of staff? I, I guess what I'm looking for is some of the analysis that we did on the signage on the very first, first item. Do they complement the historic integrity of the building? Does it keep with the visual relationship of the surrounding street cape scape, the surrounding character of the neighborhood, the historic nature of the neighborhood, you know, those type of things? If it's a historic application, I don't need to know whether the roof needs repairing or not, I need to know whether or not what they're proposing is in line with the historic nature of the neighborhood. So is what they're proposing within what you believe is the historic nature of the neighborhood?
Yes, because the OHI form says this is basically just a very plain building. There's really nothing that stands out about the building. Across the street from that would be the former Wes's Automotive that's in the Historic District that also has a metal roof. So it's keeping within that same block and within the, in that particular historic feel on that street.
I like that analysis.
I, for future reference.
Any other questions of staff?
I had the same concerns about the metal roof, but then also, I believe the block where Sub House is in, I was thinking, we call the Hartman Block, I believe they've all got standing seam roofs there, and those were standing seams that had been repaired and remained the same seam, but it's not really practical today to put those in, so this appearance, I think, is complimentary, which is I.
I'd make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Is there support for that motion? Or, Mr. McGary, support any further discussion? Please call the roll. That's one.
Mr. McGary? Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, next matter is the Historic District application for Southern East Main Street for exterior changes, the staff have reported.
Yes, we do, and I'll start it out by saying that my recommendation, I get it. So the property owner is Chelsea...
I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute, because we value your recommendation. So just, we need to have the rationale behind it, of course, but if you want us to say, hey, we, we agree with your recommendation, you need to let us know what the recommendation is and why. Give us something to support her, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
The property owner is Chelsea Demmett of Edie &amp; Lee &amp; Company, and she is proposing some exterior changes to 70s Main Street. The OHI form lists this property as a second empire building, built circa 1870. The character defining features of the building include elaborately molded cornice, semicircular dormers, and pattern slate mancered. The building is on the National Register. The proposed alterations include repair the roof where needed, repaint all fascia, cornice, and decorative trim work, repair and skim coat cement tile with stucco, repair all ornamental window hoods, install wooden flower boxes at two windows, install three goose net light fixtures in an oil rubbed bronze finish, install tongue and groove cedar planks at the base of the storefront, install a 32.71 square feet aluminum composite sign. This business is permitted to have 33 square feet in wool slash window signage and paint. As a note, the colors for the building were inspired by the colors of Tuscany. Any of the olive oils available at the Olive Oasis, which is lieutenant in this space, are native to the Tuscan region. The colors are listed here in the packet, they're rookwood, shuttergreen, chrysanthemum, toque white, and hawthorn, which is a wood stain. The color samples are being passed around. Staff recommends approval of the request based on the following. Let me think about this a second.
I bet the building needs repair.
It's keeping in the Historic District in that section of town due to the renovations that will be performed at the Cass Building, also the renovations taking place at Heron's. And basically, it's purple.
Basically, it's purple?
It's currently purple, which isn't bad, but it, it does have some damage on the, the front of the building that needs to be taken care of, which will be taken care of with the stucco skim coat.
You said the building's currently purple?
It's got, it's like, yeah.
Just make sure we're looking at the right building.
Yeah, it's usually still purple.
Any other question? Any questions of staff? Mr. Titterington?
No, ladies first.
Mrs. Sneak?
I just was going to comment that in looking at this in the packet, I was not imagining what I'm seeing on the paint sample. That's, this to me was a more reddish color, and the chrysanthemum that's on there is not.
Yeah.
Just get it in your mind's eye. And just one quick question, the, I know the places that you're talking about that need repair, were those originally windows, or is that just something extra that had been put on the exterior of the building at some point?
So are you talking about the two spaces directly, like, above the door?
Right, on either side of the original sign.
I, I couldn't find anything that showed that they were windows, I'm, so I can't say that they were, but it, the last time that it was brought before Planning Commission, several years ago, they were painted, and I'll not say this right, trompe l'oeil. It's an illusion, and it was supposed to be to reflect the building across the street, but then that obviously has fainted, or faded, and so to answer the question about, was it actually a window at one time, I don't know, but then it was painted to look like a window.
Okay. I just was curious.
Any other questions of staff?
The, there's a sample. Okay, never mind, I guess it's the bottom one, not the top one. When I look at it covered by... We're not looking at covered bridges, the color, right?
Yeah, it's the hawthorn at the bottom.
Okay. Is that a concern of the, I mean, wood is probably historically correct, but, you know, relative to maintenance wise, you know, wood is so much more labor intensive. That's a maintenance issue that you, you have in picture in Sony, right?
Right.
Yeah. I like the upgrades, so I'm not going to oppose in that nature.
But the, but the wood is only on the interior, like as you walk into that little opening?
It's, it's at the base, so along the windows, under the windows, the plate glass windows.
I was thinking it was up here.
Tongue and groove cedar planks, those will be painted, then?
They'll be stained, the hawthorn.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commission want to take any action?
I'll vote for approval.
Support.
And Mrs. Sneak supported. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Approved.
Does staff have anything else to vote commission today?
No, sir, we do not.
Commission members have anything they want to discuss? If there are nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So roll.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.